No, I think it's on vacation. Hey Marion?
Yes.
Tammy on vacation?
Yes.
Okay, that's fine.
All right, first order of business is the continuation of a public hearing for some plan review for two five dash zero one, the property that three ten and three twenty north of Chestnut. You have something you need to present? Or do we have all in front of us?
You should have it all in front of you. I, um... Yeah, Mary. Yeah. It was really hard to get a hold of them. They were, uh... I just finally got a reply back on, um... Last Friday. And then, um, our engineer got back with them, um, called multiple times today. Um, and we've complied with all their stuff, other than what we are asking for a variance on. And...
All right, well, we have, in this drainage study, there are, uh... Some things that are... Engineers highlighted. First one, one point, section one point three, confirm whether the project is subject to or exempt from the SEDESCO ordinance. And I would say that it probably is subject to the SEDESCO ordinance.
Subject to or exempt?
Uh, I would say that it is subject to SEDESCO. Well, our engineer...
Jason.
I would say that we should confirm that.
Oh, we should confirm that, okay.
I'll just take a vote on it.
Okay.
Storm drainage erosion and sediment control ordinance.
If you want to know what SEDESCO is, yeah. We have an ordinance. It's our storm drainage ordinance. I, no, I thought maybe, you know, Kenny might not have it.
Oh, wanting it smaller than what NDOT requires, is that what you're saying?
So, we're asking you to confirm that the proposed drainage outlet meets the requirements of SEDESCO.
Okay. Yeah. Okay.
All right, to confirm proposed drainage outlet meets the requirement.
Is that what they use for their drainage calculations? Outlets, uh, the outlets, the proposed outlets?
Well... For me, uh, I think that's something that their engineer and our engineer...
So, give you guys a little short, we submitted on the twenty second. Town engineer is... For three weeks.
Right.
So, uh, took us until Friday to get a reply back.
And that was me calling every thirty minutes on Tuesday? And then me calling every minute, or every thirty minutes on Wednesday? And then finally coming back on Thursday, because they were tired here.
So then we did get a reply on Friday, so, um... But they didn't do a full review, which you have now. So we were kind of short on being able to get everything back to them.
And actually, I didn't even get the reply back from the engineer. I got it from Donald, because they sent it to Donald and luckily he sent it to me, otherwise I still wouldn't have it.
All right, well, it says, "Such a four point two orifice subject to approval of the condition."
Yeah.
I've never, that's never, uh... We've never run into that before.
Which if I'm reading her notes right, the pond has adequate storage for six percent sediment?
Right. It says that, well, I thought I read somewhere in there, they wanted it large enough to, to, to be six percent oversized for sediment. Storage duration should not exceed forty-eight hours after the drainage.
So, six, six point six point one, uh, that is being completed. Uh, section six point six three is also completed.
That's what?
It is completed, it has been... Said that on, on this end.
On safety.
And the next one is the most danger, or amount of danger?
They want a danger sign put in the...
In the dry detention?
It's dry detention, unless...
I mean, give your score.
There's none in the schools. The driving back is not. So, is there one, is there one in the school, dry detention?
Nothing I'm aware of.
I've driven by there many times, but I've never seen extra signs.
I haven't either.
That's one of the questions, I mean, obviously, I'll put, we'll put a sign.
Well, if the school didn't have to, why should you have to?
Well, I agree with that.
That's all, okay.
But that was one of the things that we were trying to take back.
One of the things you guys were trying to get taken back.
Into the day.
Yeah.
Well, to different...
Do you have work on this stuff, like you got?
Yeah, then we were looking at that.
A list of what we got?
You got an engineer that, like, some of these things that have already been confirmed?
Oh, um, I can show you this picture.
Oh, we have that.
Okay. No, it doesn't have notes on it.
No, it doesn't have notes.
I'll take a picture.
We, uh... We got this.
I, I just...
We were getting it.
Okay. No, it's fine, that's fine. It's the same thing I've got already. Yeah.
Yeah, because there's no use in going through item by item.
The next one would be, uh, six point seven point two.
The detention's gonna be, it kind of in my boy, isn't it?
Yes.
So the drainage basin and the maps and the calculations have all been added for the existing and proposed, and... So I don't...
Everything we obviously have submitted meets all of the NDOT. And now, we're waiting on NDOT to approve.
The proposed discharge is leaving the site is less than its existing condition is already, so, I mean, it's...
Because right now, it's just natural runoff right now.
Right.
And you're gonna be controlling that, so, yeah.
And I know that the town ordinance... To be less.
Right, yeah.
Less than, and that's...
All right, six point one one. Document maintenance responsibilities. For most detention systems that have, that have been developed around town, we have a little manual, a little book like that.
That's what our notes are, we just have to refer back to the manual and follow it. That's, that's what the notes say here. The B and P manual. Point one three is, has also been done, he signed off on. So the eight point one, eight four, uh, the downspouts, that has been added to the drawing. I don't have it, we don't have a copy of it, but it would be, obviously be, uh, just showing where the downspouts will actually be underground and go to the detention area.
Uh, can we go back to six one three for just a second? Detention basin must include six percent additional capacity. So...
It says it's done. So she wouldn't have written that without, I mean, um, obviously, we'll have to show proof of that.
Yeah. Well, I'm, I'm just saying, it says six percent additional, so, that's why I'm... Okay, go ahead. You were back to eight one eight four?
Yeah. So that, that is, that has been added, and that's simply the drainage going to the detention. Uh, and then nine point one also goes back to the, uh, B and P manual. And that's, uh... I believe all the notes that we had from, back from the, you know, like, that we didn't have done from the engineer.
And I gave him a list of variances that you're gonna be requesting.
Mm-hmm. Okay, so, oh. So I see that the results summary over here, we're talking about storm event, existing results, and a proposed, so let's... Let's...
Uh, please provide drainage basin exhibits for both proposed and existing condition.
Which she's done, now she's got a basin map and the calculator that's been added for existing and proposed.
Mm-hmm. That's the, uh, I was just looking.
Well... And according to the web soil survey, all of that's over in my head.
Yeah.
That's something that...
The engineers have to...
Yeah.
Dirt and grass grows on it.
I guess my thing is, I just want to see if everything's okay to be able to, obviously, pending that, you know, I get all the paperwork in, that I can now apply for the variances.
Right, I mean, if, if we move forward with this, we can make... We put in the stipulations that all the engineering...
Has to sign off. Yes.
Pretty satisfying.
Yeah.
Yeah. I need to proof through it down.
Right, when we, when we get back to these drawings, I think that's all part of what we've already gone over.
Mm-hmm. And this addition stuff.
Yeah, and there's, uh...
Silk fence is added one more.
Yeah. There was a few other things, like, well, the silk fence.
Yeah, there, um...
It's added on that drawing as well.
Yeah, I know silk fence is shown, please verify whether silk fence is needed or not. Okay. It shows it on their number sixteen, I believe.
Yeah, they, uh, when they start their construction, when they start the earth moving, they put silk fence on.
Yeah. All of the engineer signs off on.
Yeah.
All right. Well, no.
Another Jonathan is the one that's been, uh, the triad that's been doing, you know, dealing with this from the beginning. So, um, I know that, uh...
I think there's no medical issues, because he was supposed to be back on the twelfth, but I don't know if he is back, but I was then dealing with the Jonathan and, uh, the only person that I got to talk to was, um, Caitlin. Oh, no, Lou never...
Oh, Lou never called?
I'm really surprised, well, he's supposed to be involved, well, he's involved with the wastewater treatment plant and she's...
Yeah, he's the one that's overlooking everything.
I find it all the responses, but I was actually speaking.
He did respond to Donald.
Did he?
Yeah, he responded, he sent him the reply.
Oh, did, did you get?
On Friday.
On Friday?
Yeah, that gave a pretty good...
Okay. Like I said, I wouldn't have had it if he didn't submit.
Pardon?
I said I still wouldn't have had it if Donald hadn't listened, but I've been driving everybody crazy asking for somebody to reply to me.
Yeah, I saw the variances that you've got listed as well, too.
All it's... We approve it, we'll just have to be contingent on the engineer being satisfied.
You know, so we have the, have the, the, uh, the opposition letter that was in this as well, too.
Opposition letter?
Yeah, it was in this, oh, it's, yeah. Sorry. It's right, yeah. That was, that's attached to the planning commission application form. Just worried about real serving alcohol, that's all it seemed to be.
Serving alcohol there.
If for some reason one of the places we would lease to, we had discussed this once before, um...
It would have to come back.
Obviously, we would have to come back and we would have to get approval, and there would have to be a variance, and, you know, because NC doesn't allow.
So butter run, like, have real run.
There is, I don't think it matters.
So, yeah.
About the lights that are gonna be shining in, but are, is it even gonna be open at night? What would be the hour?
Ten PM would be the latest.
Eight, no, we're doing the, um, downlight, the...
It's all downlighting, it's on the, the only, there's, there are no parking lot, there are two current streetlights.
Kind of like what's going over at, 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 at the, at the Dollar General.
There's already enough, like, from this...
Yeah, there, there's two streetlights.
That we're not adding anymore.
Probably get more lights over your house.
I'm sorry?
I don't see that as an issue either. I understand. Especially when it's considered a commercial corridor is.
Is she here? Is Darlene here?
She is. She's, she's requested to speak.
Yeah. We haven't got that part worked out.
That's gonna be the best thing, though. I didn't know she was here, sorry.
So, is that all you got?
Okay, yeah, okay.
Uh, we have three people that wish to speak. The first is Darlene Lawson, twenty-five Terrace Drive.
Hello.
Hi.
I'm here on two situations.
Two?
One for myself and one for the neighborhood. I'll start with myself. The light shining is not from the security lights, it's the light shining from the parking lot into my front window.
Does the parking lot go direct, does the exit of the parking lot go directly to her front window?
I live in the blue house directly across the street from your property.
Or not, Chestnut, or Terrace?
Yes.
The exit is, uh, is on that side. As far as, you know, it's shining right in your window in my picture. I'm a residential neighborhood, this house with the lights all shining, they will have a driveway.
No, yes, I lived, I've been there twenty-one years. I was there when they lived there. There's a privacy fence directly in front of me. But also, you're gonna have a parking lot, so that your people that are going in and out of those parking spots are gonna be shining right in my windows. It's an invasion of my privacy.
We wouldn't have to look at this side quickly, are you, are you guys familiar with?
What is... As far as this...
She was our planning minister.
I know this is always changed, what, two years ago? If people did not want commercial there then, it should have been thought then with...
I'm not hoping it's your property, I'm not hoping it's your...
But any business is gonna be there, because it was rezoned with business. And before people invest fifteen thousand dollars into a site plan, is when we should have asked, should this be commercial or should this pay residential? This was rezoned.
Well, my, my question is, the, there's a white house that I think is part of that church, all right?
Yes.
It used to be the record.
Faces thirty-nine, that face is thirty-nine.
Yeah, and I'm trying to get in my brain how, I mean, like, the border of, there's a privacy fence across the back of that property. Or, now...
The white vinyl, that's mine. Is that the one you're referring to, the white vinyl?
No, the, it, right directly in back of three ten and three twenty.
Okay, that's Liz and Darling's standard.
Privacy fence that runs north and south. All right, where will the driveway be?
Is that the brown?
In relation to that?
The brown fence?
So, she lives in the house, so you turn on to the terrace directly on that side. So, we're the existing drive, the existing drive.
She lives in a building, so it would, I think her house is like right here.
Miss, is your house to the south of the property development? I'm better at north, south, west direction. South, across the street from your...
Yes.
Just making sure.
Yes.
We're making sure.
What's your address? What's your address?
Twenty-five Terrace Drive.
Terrace Drive.
Building there, and then like you go straight, it's just a road. It almost...
Now that driveway enters on the street and shining in the tractor. The driveway off the back of your property is gonna wind up with...
Uh, I was, I was gonna pull it up. Yeah.
Coming out this way. There's nobody here.
Yeah.
And I'm not opposed to them developing their property, I just do not want all of this in my face. The lights and all of that, and I don't want to be in a fishbowl.
Right.
I have a granddaughter who has epileptic seizures, and all these lights on her when she spends the night with me is gonna trigger those. I don't need that, I don't want that. Now, they was generous enough to put a privacy fence behind Liz's house and Darlene's house. They're back garden their side yard. They have yet to even speak to me about anything, and I am the one that's gonna be impacted the most. And I am upset. I was fine until I was talked about before I got, got up here.
So were you aware that they were rezoning that area as commercial?
It was rezoned last year, that's not the problem, the problem is...
It's just the design sets up so that the, the lights of the cars in the parking lot are gonna go in there.
I understand that, I was just wondering.
No matter where you put the parking lot, it's gonna be some sort of light towards your house.
Not if you take your traffic in off of thirty-nine and put it back out on thirty-nine.
Still be parked.
Still has to have two.
You can put that fence you told them you was putting, put it right up the line.
And we have no objections to you doing that.
And that's the only thing I'm asking for.
Yeah, if you'd like a half, half a high fence on there, that would probably block the lights off.
So would you be okay with it if they put a fence on?
That's what my letter suggested, isn't it?
Yeah, but still, yes.
I mean, are you gonna be okay with that? You'll be okay with them doing their plan, it's on the state of that fence?
Well, we have another issue with the driveway. With the driveway, where they're gonna exit on the Terrace Drive. And I have, went around the neighborhood and talked to the neighbors. Here's... Their opposition.
Well, then why didn't the neighbor show up with you instead of just assigning the paper?
Because it's not convenient for everybody.
Well, I know, I'm, I'm just saying that they, they also have the opportunity to come forth and speak like, like you are, so, I understand that, but I prefer to listen to a person speak instead of seeing a signature.
Well, I would much prefer that they showed up for it, too.
Exactly, I'm just asking why some of the neighbors, if they're concerned about it, they didn't show up. That's just...
Their concern is a safety, a safety issue. Exiting Terrace Drive, we have no sidewalks, we have no hard shoulder, the kids walk in the street, they play in the street.
Well, uh, I wanna, I wanna add something here. Uh, several years ago, uh, we went and Lauren, uh, it's only excellent, he knows about this. We decided to upgrade the, the, the streets in, in Atlanta, and had offered sidewalks, and everybody was totally opposed to sidewalks.
Well, what I read from the notes back then...
So we didn't do sidewalks.
What I read from the notes back then was you was planning on doing sidewalks, and then the water company come in and said, if you do that, we have got to put more cutoffs in here, because we only have like two mains for this entire neighborhood. And that's in the notes of the meeting. Because I read those, and that's, and you did an estimate on that, and that's why that was set.
All right, Lauren lives over in Latice.
She's by my place.
Okay.
So, all of the neighbors said they are not opposed to them building there. They are opposed to the exit on the Terrace Drive.
You just, yeah, I have an exit on Terrace Drive, is that a given for your plan or...
It alleviates traffic on, directly on...
On thirty-nine and thirty-nine, it's gonna be trying to...
In not going to require it.
It's gonna be required in the...
And we need this, two years ago, we only changed it to... I apologize, it's just...
Well, Framers is on, along the same quarter, they have, they have two entrances as well, too. So, they're on the same part of the, the side of the, the commercial corridor as well, too, they have two entrances as well, and so... Uh, what's it, Darlene?
Does, Derek, does IG have two entrances?
And they have one going into the neighborhood there in Homestead, on, uh, Road Route. And the fire station has to do as well, so...
Okay.
And they'll require that on an undeveloped rural street?
So what's your...
I mean, can you, can you just imagine Halloween, and can you imagine the festival and all of that?
We, we get, they descend on Homestead, it's just, yeah, we get hammered all the time. Uh, I was gonna say, so, with a fence along Terrace, that wouldn't, that wouldn't satisfy you, you'd need something else as well, too.
I'm fine with the privacy fence.
Okay.
As long as their exit satisfies the rest of the neighborhood. And I don't know...
Okay.
Because these people are upset.
Well, I see, that's the other thing I was wondering about, and I don't, and I was gonna say...
Am I supposed to get out?
And you want the front, the two year ago?
No.
Hold on, sorry, I thought that was what you asked.
No, in front of my house, no.
They're talking about it between the, you know, right between the street and where the cars park, that's...
I don't know that they can put a privacy...
I don't know, not... And that's for this side.
There was one there prior to the house's burden.
Was it right on the road though?
When Wapler, Wapler place burned down? You said when the Wapler place burned down, you said there was a. Oh, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, because they're the ones that tore the privacy fence down. Not that it didn't need it, but.
Okay.
Just on a sidewalk in the neighborhood and started piling cars in on that little distance there. They were starting zooming through the neighborhood to get to the other entrance. And that's where the kids are down there playing with their John Deere tractors and their big wheels and all of that. Yes. Well, we, we know where our kids are, we know we have kids that weren't gonna play. I mean, that's where they play, that's where they buy the boxes, where they walk to school. My kids play in the street, my grandkids, when they come.
Yeah, I don't let my kids play in the street, but I'm a city girl. Maybe they.
Curve and go it throughout Long Terrace. All right, we have two more people.
Thank you.
Scott Pierce.
Good evening. Um. Jason and I are working to communicate on certain aspects of his development versus what potentially our development across the street. We have some issues that we have yet to resolve. Um, and I ask that we have that opportunity for cure before decisions made. Um, primarily, the water, we still have that issue, we've not seen any information that's changed since the last meeting. To, uh, Ms. Everett's point, you know, we're losing natural absorption area. And we're going to basically an entire impervious surface. So, the runoff that exists today with the support of the impervious surface or the non-impervious surface is going to change significantly. And we've not seen calculations on that, and we will.
That's why this is, and it says there's gonna be less.
They say there's gonna be less, but.
I trust an engineer because that's what they do.
Our engineer says that's not accurate. We have yet to see revised data that was pending.
Where, okay, I understand that.
That was pending submission in the last meeting.
Where are your numbers to?
We reviewed their number.
Where are your numbers to contradict their numbers? If you got them, I'd, I'd love to see them.
We can get those, but as we brought up in our last meeting, and as of today, nothing's changed, as for the last meeting.
They showed numbers today.
When was it available? According to John Larison, we've not seen anything new.
When did your numbers become available?
Um, we have to engineer. One second.
When were they approved?
Friday.
Okay. So. I mean, we have to have an opportunity to review, that's all we're asking, number one. Number two. We have yet to hear from NDOT and further regulations expressed by our engineer, the drives have to line up. And that has to be something we have to have an opportunity to review to make sure that we are negatively impacted on our property. We've yet to see that information nor have that conversation with NDOT. I was at the office, uh, yesterday, nowhere. And until we approve, we have to make sure those alignments are in place so our property can proceed forward as well. We don't have that information. Next thing, when we attempted to correct drainage issue, we talked about the tension where the runoff comes onto the property. We were told we were not allowed to have a permanent structure which drains is in the right way.
When you say who we were told, who are we talking about?
Myself, my wife.
Now, who told you this?
Hollowing engineer.
Okay, well, you didn't say.
NDOT.
I mean, who specifically, you said now it's NDOT, now it's help, I just wanted.
We were told we couldn't modify that, that space in seventy-five feet of the, of hundred fifty feet right away. So, we need to know the answer. And we don't have. I'm not opposed to their development, I, I try, Jason and I have talked, we've met, we've looked at sites, we've talked about things. But there are many other pieces that have to be answered before his to be approved so it doesn't negatively impact us. And those are the answers that we're looking for, I'm not, I, I wish you the best with that, I hope it all gets worked out. But we have to not be negatively impacted by that development, that's all I'm asking.
What are the, what are your?
Drainage, entrance and egress, and the third thing is, as just expressed to us last week, that acceleration and deceleration lanes are now a requirement if there's more than twenty-five entrances or exits projected for a particular location. And again, I don't know how that works, but we need NDOT's approval and we need NDOT discussion before something gets moved forward. And until that happens, I, I don't see how it can be improved because I, we're gonna be negatively impacted potentially. Not saying a hundred percent, cause we don't know. And we need those answers and we need to be able to see that data submitted for Friday, I'm gonna take it straight.
This may be helpful, I don't know, but I think it would be helpful if you could give us your requests in writing so that we can address them, right?
I'd still like to see these numbers you keep talking about too, so, and, and when you say we were told, by who, I mean, it.
It was, it was brought up in the last meeting, it was brought up in the last meeting that you're changing the surface from the ability to absorb water naturally.
Going to be less, and they're controlling it.
And that was challenged by your board members last, last meeting.
And they did what we needed them to do.
And we need time to then review it, and if it was done on Friday, today is Tuesday, we would not have that data. Not have adequate time to review it.
Well, the NDOT permit is, I mean, that's gonna be a problem for both of y'all. Because there's a, there's a manhole and a cleanout structure.
So, it's acceleration, acceleration lanes.
On your property, there's already an entrance.
Yeah.
Uh, I'm, I'm not an expert in this, but I'm telling you what I was just told by Holloway engineer you asked to. And if there's more than twenty-five in, points of train, in, entrances or exits, that then have to be acceleration and deceleration lanes. And that, that entrance doesn't have those, we're asking for it, we have to do the same thing for us as well. And so, we have to have the NDOT data, I'm not against it, I swear to you, I'm not. I did it. Well, maybe we got our engineer and your engineer to talk, that would be a wonderful thing. Cause Jason and I doing this to laypeople is probably not the best approach. But before approval can be provided, we need to have that opportunity for that to occur. We need NDOT's answers, we need our engineer. That's not true. That's not accurate. There is an entrance that's designed on that property, it's not there because we needed that approval. And if you wanted our entrance there, we could have, I mean, it could have been put in, but then it's not aligned with yours and that's gonna create a more, more difficult situation for you. I'm just simply stating that we need to be able to have those people talk. Absolutely. That'd be awesome. Be great, I mean, I'm just saying, that has to happen though, before we can approve. I understand.
Now, I'd even be hard about the, the entrances across from each other should be lined up.
Yep.
Now. There's, you know, their project has been ongoing for a while. Have, what are you planning that shows that an entrance onto your property across there is going to hinder your possible development? How does it affect, negatively affect what you plan to do with your property, putting that entrance right across from them on your property?
It depends on where it has to go, we have a drainage issue.
Well, you just stand there.
I'll try and explain it to you.
Right.
All right, we have a drainage issue that is limiting the space that we can go to them more. If we're able to deal with the drainage issue, which we've all tried to do many times, if we're able to deal with that, then that allows for things to move to more.
Right.
Which is, which is beneficial, but the drainage issue has to be resolved and the entrance has to be resolved or determined. And do acceleration and deceleration lanes need to be provided?
No.
Those are, those are all NDOT regulations.
Now, again, it'd be nice to see that regulation on the acceleration and de-acceleration lanes as far as the distances, the number of, you know, the number of entrances. You're not saying, in what dis, distance that twenty-five is supposed to be?
Yep.
A half mile, is it quarter mile?
It's to exiting the property.
Right, I, I understand, I understand it's a safety issue.
Yeah.
But, you know.
And I'm happy to have a Ross get with you regarding that at our expense, I'm not asking you to pay for it.
But your initial, initial project that was years ago, you never talked about any deceleration.
No, I understand, this is a new, this is new regulation.
Yeah, let's not go there.
So, but anyway, no, I, I, I understand, I understand.
It wasn't, it wasn't an issue previously.
I would like to see that, and that.
Yeah.
That part of it.
But as of Friday, when I talked to Tom, and he said this is now an issue, so it's something that we have to take into consideration. And if the, you know, I, you know, I'm judging your property. But we don't have a decision yet, and we've not had a meeting yet, we don't have any feedback yet. So, so until those can happen, I don't see how approval can happen. We have to be able to get that information from them before anything can go forward, and we have to then make a decision if, if our entrance can align with theirs. I think it might be able to, but acceleration, deceleration lanes are a factor, and then that comes into play. The manhole comes into play, we have to do that out. And I don't, that's all, again, I'm not saying this should never happen, I'm saying that we need more information before.
So, you have to take your request, what information you need, I'll try to be able to do it, right? And move on from there.
Thank you.
Richard Hurst.
Thank you all for letting me speak. And, along with Darling, a little bit concerned about what Mr. Engler's trying to build there. And by the way, three years ago, when this was all come up, I was there and the building was packed, so it was not very fair to say that nobody spoke against it because we did. You probably remember when that occurred, we were in the other building, and it was full that night. I don't have a problem with them wanting to develop the property we bought. Homes would be much more to my liking because it is really desert. I never got a, a letter from, this was even coming up, I never got a letter that you're zoning that's on my car.
It's been on the agenda for the zoning commission.
I'm saying that the letters never came. There was no notice, so if you're not physically looking, and I'm an old man, I'm retired, I don't go looking for what's gonna happen or what's not gonna happen. And I, I don't whether Mr. Engler remembers me or not, I said, you know, I don't have a problem with a restaurant going in. If you want a restaurant, buy the two pieces of property next to your house and build a restaurant next to your house, don't build it next to our house.
But it's not a restaurant.
There's gonna be.
It's an ice cream shop.
Just, just an ice cream shop.
No alcohol.
Well, I know that the alcohol is. Somebody said there was gonna be a restaurant going in.
The only restaurant I heard about was supposed to be down there off of Glacier Drive, and that's the last name.
The Taco Dream?
Yeah.
The, the bottom line is traffic. Because people are gonna end up going down Loudon, coming around the back way, you know that, you live in a neighborhood, people don't always come the most direct route. When there's an accident on thirty-nine, here comes the traffic. If I would have known that something was gonna go in, my house burnt down two years ago, I live at seventy-five Terrace, my house was the one that burned. I wouldn't have built a new house there. So, I spent, I spent two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars building a new house only to have businesses move in to what I consider to be a residential neighborhood.
You might consider it, but it is not a commercial.
Well, it is now.
It has been for, I think.
Two years.
Uh, yeah, well, no, it's been, it's been long, it's been longer than that because the UDO has put it, the unified.
Basically, thirty-nine is a commercial.
Yes, it's, it's our commercial court.
I understand that. But in, oh, and by the way, the White House addresses, they're pastor remodeling that, so there's gonna be somebody.
That's the old registry for the.
Yes, for the Nazarene, for the Nazarene church, so there's, there's a young couple that are, that's rebuilding that, and they're gonna be living there. Progress is gonna come, I know that. And. I know that I've spoken to other folks, our biggest outspoken person is no longer with us, whether you know Reddy or not. But I'm not trying to take her place and I'm not trying to be Mister negativity. So, just consider, if this was your house next door. That's the main thing. Is it what you want, most of us older guys moved out here because it's a nicer area and it's quiet, we have a little bit of room, no problems. You wanna, you wanna place a business next to your house, do you wanna place?
If you live in a commercial.
I'm just saying.
Okay.
I'm not here to argue with, I'm here to stay.
I'm just, I'm just.
I'm just saying, but when I moved here, it wasn't a commercial.
Right, but you could, you should have brought that when it turned commercial, so that way you could have brought the whole commercial thing.
Nobody noticed, there was no notice.
We had, uh, 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 because we had a, a, gosh, how many, how many times did we have, uh, over at the festival building, we put signs up as well too? The people could come in and, and see what the, the overall comprehensive plan was.
For a person that doesn't get out and go a lot of places.
Well, I, I understand, but I'm just saying, in this town, but in this town, I mean, after a while, everybody knows everything.
Well, yes and no.
I've lived here twenty years and I know it.
But I didn't know that this was coming until Darling came to my door.
And that's what all, all those people I talked to.
None of us got letters in that neighborhood, none of us.
And that was Darling, what three, Darling, Liz and myself. Three passes.
But anyway, I, I don't want to give any more time, but I'm just saying, I know progress has to come and I please understand that it is not. But I would just hope that you all keep that in mind.
Okay.
Right, wrong or indifferent, if it's the next year. How would that affect you, doesn't it? No, don't go there.
He doesn't want to fence with you.
Don't go there.
Let's not.
I mean, I didn't make a commercial, you meant to. Well, you understand what I mean.
I was probably president of that, so, I was president of Duncan.
So, the little guys are usually the ones that get sit back with their hands up and that's, nobody ever calls on them. So, I just wanted to let my position be known and I thank you for your time and I appreciate all of you taking the time to listen, thank you.
I'd like to move that we close the public hearing. All stepping up.
Do we have one?
Any house for that legal?
All in favor?
On favor? Bye.
All right, I'm, uh. Kinda torn on what to do here. I mean, I, I really feel like. We need to communicate with Mr. Pierce's engineer.
I did open it.
Well, the, the driveway, the driveways have to line up according to our unified development ordinance.
With the, that sewer inlet that there, you know, it's only limited to a very small area that you can go in and out of that property.
Right, I, I, I don't.
Well, it was all we had to do before.
I, I've been over there and walked around and kinda looked at the project and, and I think for him to line his driveway up with your driveway is gonna be problematic. But that's a unified, that's a UDO problem. That, I don't.
What I was reading, I, I took that as an NDOT regulation, not necessarily ours for a time.
Yeah, and then another thing is, as far as NDOT is concerned and everything, is that they haven't gotten NDOT approval yet on anything.
Right.
So, I.
I, I feel like we need to have some kind of, uh, an approval from the NDOT that to draw the existing drive. is a, is a usable drive from there.
Yeah. Eric gonna have to do that.
Well, because if, if they're gonna require XL and D cell lanes to get in and out of that property.
That's gonna, that's, we might as well just.
So we're gonna have to wait.
Figure thirty-nine's not gonna be a business court order.
Right.
Because that's reality.
Right, well, to comply with this ordinance, you're supposed to put an access road on either side of thirty-nine.
But there's gonna be a variance on that.
That would take up all of your profits.
That's gonna be a variance, yeah.
That's one of the variances for U D Os.
Right.
But if INDOT is gonna require an XL and D cell, that's on you to your profit.
Have you, have you, when you talk with INDOT, I know the public hearing is closed, but when you.
Last question.
Okay, when you dealt with INDOT, have you heard anything of the sort?
Can you come up? To the, no, I mean to the microphone, yeah, please.
I have not.
You have not?
I have not heard anything like that.
And INDOT approved your entrances?
We're waiting for the approval.
Um, the India talked to INDOT, but.
Wait.
Back, wait, well, back around there. Yeah, this, right, so it was last month. I think the twenty-fourth of the last month after she got everything.
Still waiting on INDOT to say that your entrance, entrance off of thirty-nine is, you know, correct location.
Correct. So if, if you haven't got anything approved from INDOT yet, so.
Right.
Okay, if you haven't got anything approved from INDOT, you couldn't build, so we couldn't say one way or another, so that gives, it's gonna have to go.
INDOT has.
Gonna have to go till next month, and that gives, you know, if you need the INDOT approval back by then to approve it, and that gives you guys one month to get you and you and
Yeah, I have.
Paper guy, paper guy, arm muscle and figure it out.
Like, I'm a little uncomfortable with the public at this time. If INDOT have INDOT approval for your entrance, that, that, you know, because, because of how busy thirty-nine is.
Sure.
Um, the entrance that we have is the one that's going to be used, it's already approved, it's just a matter of making it a little wider.
Right, now, that, right, but that, when that entrance was approved, that was residential at the time. So now it's commercial, so I don't, I don't know if that changes the stipulation or the specifications for an entrance like that. I understand it's convenient for your property to just use the same one. Right.
But again, does INDOT control the other exit too? You mean, they have to get approved for that one, or is it just on thirty-nine?
It's just on thirty-nine, because that's the state road.
So, yeah, and I think that.
And like I said, I'm.
We're, we're, we're okay with waiting till next month, at this point.
I still like the project overall.
Kind of dragged to the very last.
INDOT approval yet, that's, to me, that's a red flag right now.
And with that, I'm gonna move that we table this until next, uh, plan.
I will second Kate, and the motion been made to second the table list to the next meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Yeah, I have another question for you. What, what about the lady that's complaining about the lights and begging? I mean, is it, is it a doable thing to put a, a four-foot fence up?
I don't know.
Can I ask INDOT when you're discussing this with them?
I, I will obviously bring this up to the public.
No, no, it's, it's like this, they said to make sure that, okay, if INDOT says that you have that up there, we won't be able to communicate that as well too.
Right, and then if they say a, a structure like a fence is, is not okay, would a planting as far as shrubs?
Well, there are gonna be, and that's, that is part of, I mean, so we could, use part of our green space, we could go out there and, and put taller bushes to go across there.
Now, that, that's, that's a thinking our ass.
I mean, we, we have so many plantings.
You mentioned about the lights coming out of the exit, but.
Wow, you're also looking at, you can be able to see traffic when you come out of there too.
Yep, exactly, you know, you put bushes there, how far are you gonna have to go to see how traffic coming from your, your left?
Yeah.
So that's also, so I mean, that.
Well, I, I will definitely address it in looking to see what we can do to resolve it, obviously. We don't, we can also.
We don't want to, yeah, and we're talking about the.
This is possible, and the next time, the two of you guys come together, do some arm wrestling, get your, your, your two, your two, the firms together.
The driveway is gonna be kind of lined up with harder driveway.
I, I'm not just playing at the event.
Okay, we're just talking about the, the egress from here. That's what they're gonna be coming out, that's her house, that's where it's gonna come out, because they're gonna be coming in.
Yeah, this is.
Which one is her house?
That's it.
So it's gonna be. It's gonna be glaring lights at her bra.
Yeah.
Right. So that.
During the summer, you tell you've got some, some, some.
Possibly, but I mean.
Winter. It, it, it all depends on, it all depends on if you miss out the other two. Location.
Oh, uh, hold on.
Alright, we have some gentleman here from, uh, Radisson Development to discuss the amendment to the U D O.
Can I ask a quick question for you, Steve? When's the next day for the meeting? Uh, it's always posted on the website, it's also, uh, Mary Ann has it, and Donald has it as well.
Second Tuesday.
Every month.
June tenth.
Okay.
It gets posted everywhere.
Good evening, how's everybody? Uh, Mark Radisson, Festival and Development, some Brian, Adam here's with me. So, but we, we had a discussion with Eddie and Donald, Mary Ann, uh, a couple weeks, a week ago, and, uh, thought that we would use, ask to use this time as kind of pull up the sleeves and, and a work session. And I'm public, I'm not trying to get anything voted on tonight, we want, we would like your guys' input in order to try to come to some resolution and some, hopefully, better in your eyes, better in our eyes, and win type of situation on development.
What's your one thing?
So, I don't know, did everybody, did you said? Okay, so they have, okay. So, and I can give you guys, have you share, I didn't bring enough for everybody, but it's just a little bigger. So, so this is a very rough kind of draft.
Just thirty-nine?
Yes.
Okay.
Thirty-nine, the last half of the page, um, so the idea, you know, we've heard a lot over the last couple of years as we've been involved with this property. Um, we came through and did our, did an amendment to the P U D that Ryan did, and, and that amendment was changing the radii on a couple of the harder corners, and Eddie, your thirty-foot memory was very good, because in that amendment that we did, we, we kept the forty-foot driveway, but we were allowed to go down to thirty-foot on the side yard, which is actually a front yard, because it's on the corner. So, for example, this lot right here, you know, that's kind of a corner lot, the inside corner. You have, we would have had a forty-foot here, but we had a three-foot on the side. And so that's the reason why I think you were thinking thirty-foot in our conversation the other day, just so you know. But we, what we are, what we are trying to get to is, we've, we've heard a lot of things, as I said, so, you know, I feel you've always kind of talked about having that boulevard.
Yeah, that's a very commercial corridor, and it, and that, that's my biggest concern about.
So you talked about the, the, having the boulevard to go over the church. Uh, we've talked about.
Oh, yeah, that too, I'm sorry.
That's what I'm talking about.
I'm sorry.
And not talking about the boulevard on thirty-nine, I'm not popping for that, that's a much bigger problem.
Well, I, I had a scoping meeting with INDOT, and it's been probably maybe four years ago now.
Yeah.
And they.
Twenty-one.
They expressed to us in that meeting.
Yes.
That we should have roads going through these properties that interconnect with the county roads, so that all the traffic doesn't dump out on the state.
So. Understand, hard, hard to accomplish in a lot of, from a practicality perspective.
Yeah.
Uh, just like you were just talking about with them, having a service road, you know, feeding all the commercial properties, it'd blow up everything that's right along, right? So, so some things are, you know, ideal, some things are practical, some things aren't practical, so, you know, when, when we got involved with this, there was an initial thought plan when Ryan brought it through, so that's, that's the plan we ran with, but subsequently, I've heard a lot about the boulevards through our property, or at least the connecting road that didn't have a bunch of turns to it.
Mm-hmm.
Connected, so that's one thing. There's also been, you know, some, uh, not concerns, but I would say, uh, comments that would like to see more commercial, right? So, uh, we had a pond in our original development, um, that was, uh, uh, that pond was, was taking up some of the commercial space.
Yeah.
And so what you have in front of you eliminates that pond there.
Are you talking about the second major?
Oh, yeah, sorry, that's the other one, so, yeah, that one still has.
Okay, you're talking about the second one?
Yeah, I was talking about the second one, but let's stay focused on the first one, I forgot that we didn't have that, I gave you guys my copies, so, um, so, in what you have with the black dots on it, the, the, the larger one that I've given you so far with the black dots.
The eighty-one?
The eighty-one, so that shows the same amount of commercial that shows the boulevard type of road running through on a straight-through basis, right? And that's following the water main, where the water main actually is, not where the water main is proposed. Because those are two different things, as we've talked about in the past.
Yeah.
The second one, uh, that you have, which I'm not a big fan of, yeah, what we have is that one. Yeah, and, and, and the pond.
Right, what happened on these small diodes, Z A, I consider that a common area, is that retention?
Yes, yes, staying with a circle or an oval to it is gonna be the retention, so.
So you got, so there's three small ponds, in essence, retention areas on this one.
Yeah, and the other one's got a smaller one, which is overkill for what we need, but you have to have certain widths. You have to have certain widths to a pond, certain dimensions for a pond to, to operate, and we can't narrow those up any further than what that is. Uh, because they're gonna be deep, so deep, X, X feet deep, we gotta have Y wide. So, and that straps us a little bit, right, you can see there, right, it's, that's, that's a twelve. With that one plan, it gets us an extra acre, acre and a quarter maybe of, of commercial, but it straps me significantly on the single fan side. So I don't like that one as much as I like the first one. From that perspective, right, so, and, and we've talked about, we talked about this a little bit last, last meeting, but, you know, the, the dollar amount that we're gonna commercial doesn't match the residential. And then on the flip side, the commercial will more than match probably those ten homes or eleven homes, that extra acre of commercial, maybe? Uh, because if you have a three hundred fifty, four hundred thousand dollar home, and you have, even if it was a million dollars of commercial, well, if you have ten homes, that's three point five of assessed value.
Right.
And now, if, even if you get your three percent versus your one percent, you're about break even. It's really not a whole big difference to you guys, I don't think, and I'm not a tax valuation expert, uh, but it's not a big change for you guys at one acre of extra commercial, where for us, it really, immensely, you know, from a revenue perspective. So, that's kind of the essence of, of a couple of ideas, right, from, from that standpoint. And we only show the forty acres we currently own, not the balance of the property, because we just were focused on that part, just to.
Well, the topography makes it a little bit more.
Well, and, and, but it also, that's, and that's, that's the, the reason why we're here, right, is, is where we first started last month, and, and why we're here today, is that we would, we would like, you know, the current zoning has three hundred units or less, right, three hundred's the max. We aren't looking to go over that, right, in fact, we'd probably be under that considerably. But we can't go any further down than where we are today in our current design of two sixty, two sixty-two, right? We're not trying to go anything over, you know, where we were, we're trying to get to something where we can get relief from the cost of construction. And that relief of cost of construction is the topography that we have there, as everybody knows, with the big hill. If we can get those houses eventually pulled away from there, with some flexibility on setbacks, as we talked about, with some flexibility on, on, uh, lot width, uh, that would help us immensely, where it doesn't change, it doesn't change the total number of units, doesn't change the density, right? It provides more open space, you know, maybe for park, you know, there certainly would be park of some sort, but, you know, those steep hills aren't gonna really, not gonna work super well from a, uh, engaging into park area, uh, but they do give us at least open space, it provides the neighbors open space, uh, inside the, inside the development and outside.
So, my question, one of my questions is, with this one, the eighty-one.
Yep.
Now, is that with our lot size?
No, that, no, that's with, that's with ours, so that hasn't.
Okay, here's why, because I agree with Mr. Fowler about needing commercial, however, you've got, there's a huge property right across the road on the west that is, has, that is commercial property that can also be developed, you know?
Right.
And there have been, I think there was one or two projects that came across, but they just.
They just, yeah.
It, it, it's a hard, it's a hard sell currently with the current makeup of the town to do the commercial side.
Having some, I, I, it doesn't concern me to have commercial property completely north to south. As long as there is some for possible development, I'm fine with that. My sticking point, my two sticking points for that development is, you know, the lot size. I live in Homestead, and we, I live on one of the small lots, it's not the smallest, but my lot, I think, is fifty-six by hundred and twenty-two size-wise, and we're, are close to our neighbors. We had a fire four years ago.
Right.
And no matter what lot size you have
Five years.
In a high-density development, it's not gonna be enough if there's a fire. There is gonna be more damage to than just one home.
Well, and so we're, so we're.
Lot size, I don't want to go smaller than what we previously approved. I, I would prefer to see larger, but we, we're working with what we did approve. I personally would not want to see any small, and I understand that kind of works against you to a certain degree, but.
Yeah, so let, let me, and let me throw a couple things back at you on that, so, so we, so first off, we were approved for fifty-five foot wide and sixty foot wide lots, okay? And we still will have fifty-five foot and sixty foot wide lots. So the original proportion was sixty, was, the sixty footers were approximately two-thirds of the development, almost right on two-thirds, and one-third was fifty-five footers.
When I read the length of your set, it still had what you have last month, that you would prefer to go down inside.
For sure, for sure, we still will have some sixties.
You know, I, I understand. I, I understand the numbers.
But, but, and then, and then the other part to your, to the, to the fire safety, if you will.
Yeah.
So in this development, we currently have in our community, we have seven and a half foot wide setbacks on each side. So that provides for 15 foot. We're not looking for any delta on that 15 foot, right? So if I had, even if I had a seven foot wide lot and I wanted to build a 55 foot wide house.
Right.
I mean, to have the same situation that you're discussing, right? So it was, the key was, and, and in a lot of other communities, we are at six foot or seven foot. Here we're seven and a half. So there are other instances where we're five foot. But generally speaking, six has been kind of become the industry norm around other jurisdictions. But, but seven and a half gives us 15 feet in between homes.
And then my second issue, this, you know, that was brought up is, do you have any calculations on the sewer flow that your property is going to?
So Sean, so Sean was at the meeting we had last week.
You know, and, and this is, goes back to my thinking of living at Homestead, when that property was originally developed and approved. And C P Morgan gave the town money to upgrade the sewer plant to allow for its full extent of its development, which is 950 or wherever homes. And now some last month, we heard that now the sewer is already maxed out or it's over capacity. So now if our sewer system is over capacity, even before the start of your development, what's going to happen when those homes start coming online? I don't know. I haven't seen anything from the town that we've got enough improvements. And I understand that it's like probably four years down the road before you really start getting people to move in, three or four years before they start moving in. But, you know, what's our sewer system going to be at that point? That's, that's a big.
So, so Sean was in the meeting we had the other day, right? And, and he, I, we came out of that meeting fairly positive, right? That was part of the reason why we asked for the meeting because sewer situation last month was the first time I had heard.
Yeah.
And it was brand new for you guys too. But he said in working through things that there's some I and I issues and infiltration issues. That he thinks he can get resolved, which will help immensely. And as well as the expansion was already, you know, already, already in design or already designed mostly and on its way to going. So he felt coming out of that meeting, Eddie, correct me if I'm wrong, I, we felt like he was fairly positive and felt like he could facilitate servicing all of Eagle Point.
I don't know that we voted on expansion yet. I know we've been talking about. I don't think we even voted on expansion, basically.
Those are my two concerns about the problem. We're just not saying we're totally against it. I'm not totally against it, but.
Right. And you guys have approved our, technically our first section, the way we originally designed it. We're not building it yet, but we went all the way through and got totally approved for that to be put in the ground. We have NDOT, Idam, everybody, you guys approvals, you know, through that whole process. And we're ready to go. And that's when we, when we send out the bid and that's when we, we kind of figured, hey, we got a, we got a big problem here. So from that perspective, and I understand things change, right? You guys had this a hot moment, unfortunately, on the sewer thing. So, but he felt pretty good about things, about where it was headed as far as I came out.
That problem would exist whether we're not.
Right, whether we're developing.
But we did meet Sean and he was positive about, about the expansion, but this, the request that we are talking about wouldn't have any impact on, on that. We've been starting our first session, we're still the same problem today. So.
Well, we also have to understand as well too, I mean, I'm on the town council and right now we're, like I said, we're investigating, we're, we're exploring what we need to do as far as an expansion is concerned. And then once we go ahead and determine that we need to do this and we have to go ahead and set rates and this sort of thing. And once we go ahead and contract this, I mean, by the time this expansion gets done, we're looking at three, four years from now at least. I mean, I'm talking 29, maybe 30. So, but.
That's why I was curious.
That's why Bob is bringing this up because I mean, it is a real concern to us, especially with. Now they show us at 99 to 100, sometimes 100.
That's not a problem though. From what, well, well, but it's, but you can't, it's not a, it's not a problem from the amount of water. They have water, they have, they have water and they can service us. Morgan County water.
They can give you a live hydrant.
Not a live hydrant. They're not necessarily going to give me a live hydrant, but they're going to service us and have water in the, in the system and be able to service the houses.
I think it's unconscious a little bit, you let somebody live in a house and they don't have.
Well, there's, there's.
We're already living in houses, I've got right now.
Well, I know, but I don't think we should bring more people.
We got, what, section nine is still finishing up right now?
Right. Well, the, the fire hydrant issue, they have a valve that has to be turned on near each hydrant.
It's whether you turn on, whether you turn on, on the hydrant or turn on the valve.
Or somebody in your house could burn down before that happens.
Well, but see the fire department should have that with them.
They should.
In fact, Mooresville's fire department, they responded to that fire and turned those hydrants off.
The ones that was in.
The reality is, come on out of my way, that all, all of these issues exist right now. We're, we're already approved with this first section. I think our point is it's not a viable product, project because Ryan Homes can't, can't do it. So our options are to do nothing and do something with commercial and sell the rest of the ground. Or try to do something with what we have today, but we've yet to find a builder that can afford it at that cost. Or make some modifications to what's currently here to allow for this Arbor product, which is a step up from what MVR had. And asking for a few modifications to what's already been approved. Again, I totally get which, and we sat and talked in our meeting this last week about the hydrants. That's not, we have zero control over that.
But we'll just give you an idea.
But this neighborhood is already approved. No, no, I, I get you. But I'm saying right now, if we, if we decided to go, we could build exactly what we have approved today. But that doesn't, I guess your theory, my, my point is that you're, you're still going to have those concerns. We could build what we want, you know, we could build what's approved today. It still has those two issues. So I guess my, my point is what we're asking for doesn't change the fact that we could still build it today. Those are issues that if the town wants to take up those things with the fire department, and I understand, I know Sean's, you know. Again, Sean, Sean sounded like he had solutions in play and knew he had to get a new expansion built, thought he could serve a first section of us. Again, understanding it's going to be several years before we really have toilets getting flushed. You know, for us, it's can we make a viable project here from Morovia? And at the current approved zoning, we can't. We don't have a building.
The way I look at it is, and I'm looking at it from, I haven't been here that long, so keep that in mind. But the way I'm looking at it is we have our chance now to put in there what we want to put in there or else deny it. Where we didn't have that chance before because it was rushed through and it was already approved, right?
I don't think it was rushed through. I think that took a long time to get through.
It didn't get rushed.
It didn't. I've heard from a few people that.
Yeah, but that's rumor. I was president of the town council when all of this was going on.
It took a long, I mean, I, our understanding.
I only had the people outside with the torches and the pitchforks and everything, with all that crap.
I look at it as our second chance to get this right.
Well, I, I, we'll, we'll tell you from our experience, right? We've been doing this for 35 years. We're just not spring chickens in this and.
Didn't expect that you were.
This development has, I, I think, there's, there's some other things that help the town in the long haul, right? There's, there's less lineal footage of sewer, there's less lineal footage of street to, to maintain in the future, right? If, if we're, if you're able to let us, what we call cluster, meaning bring the lots down just a touch in size, right? Bring, bring the setbacks down a touch, that'll let us cluster, cluster the homes away from the bad topo that we have on the site. Which will then make it easier for the, for snowplows, easier for, for maintenance of all the utilities on the site. And I know water's not yours, but water would be less as well. And, and, and it's what we do in a lot of other jurisdictions is, is cluster and provide more open space. And so again, we're not looking for more homes here. We're normally when you, when you hear that first connotation of, hey, we want, you know, we want smaller lots. Well, that means more homes, that means more families. Well, not here compared to what we're, we're talking about. So we're not, we're not trying to pull the wool over anybody's eyes. And in the past, when we've had these situations. We've gone to, gone to have these type of conversations with planning commissions in order to roll up our sleeves and, and hear your input. And Bobby, hearing, hearing what you're saying, and Lori, I understand there's not water in those hydrants, there never will be at this point in time, just because that's their policy.
Yeah, until we can go ahead and.
You guys can get it resolved with them, great. But that's beyond us.
You're saying it's either here or there, we understand.
Right. So I guess, you know, back to the, the lot size. So again, we had a mix of 55s and 60s. We're just, we're looking for flex. And, and because this is going to be more one neighborhood versus kind of two little pods in the neighborhood as, as MVR Ryan proposed it. Arbor's plans, the elevations, I hope you had a chance to look at the, that file or not, but those elevations, not all of them would be approved by us by any means. So there are better elevations as. We will keep those, we didn't print them out, I don't think. You may have given you some of them, but most of them, and they would have been in our original package as well.
We're on everybody's phone, but we have.
I know, they're sad right now. Yeah, I'm trying to see where they look in file online. If I put, if I pick.
Let's, let's just go, trust me a little bit, is that these are better elevations than Ryan Homes. They're simply Ryan product. Yeah, there you go.
Yeah.
They're simply Ryan product. It is, is, is definitely. And these are going to be better elevations.
I know.
We had vinyl in, in two thirds of the neighborhood, there was already vinyl.
Yeah.
Do you want to drop down to 145 on the, the lot or 45 for the lot size?
No, 55.
The questions we had most time was the setback.
The setback, so setback to.
I can understand the setback for me personally.
Yeah, and it's not all of them, right?
And asking, and the thing that sticks in my mind is coming in and saying he needs, needed smaller lots sizes for whatever reason.
So that was, but, right, and I understand that, that normally does, right? That's the reason I was saying that.
I can understand the setbacks because it's topography.
And the same, but it's the same thing with the lot size because then.
But I, I can't control topography. I can't control lot size.
Right, for sure. But, but my point is, is by bringing that lot size down, we're able to, to cluster them more together to stay out of those zones. And again, this is why we're here talking about it, right? Is to be able to have this dialogue and be able to go back and forth on it. The, again, the setback, site setback, we're not looking for any, any change.
Basically, we're going to get more green space.
Yes.
Because of what you're having to do because of the topography.
Yeah. And it's not a whole bunch, but it's just enough to get us far enough away between the setback. And the setback will be our priority, right? We'd love to have more 60s than 55s if we can, from a sales perspective. We're going to sell them all the same price to Arbor Homes. Arbor's going to, well, it's a blended price. It's a blended price.
60, 60, 60, 65, it don't matter.
But it's a blended price, right? We're looking at a different one. And so that's how we negotiate it going forward, through that process with them. But what we need to be able to do is, is try to keep away from those big slopes. And if you give it the flexibility to, to get in, just know that, again, we'd rather have more 60s if we can and keep it away. Or a shorter setback helps us, especially as we go around curves. Because to have 40 foot at the building line, a curve 40 foot wide for the house is what it takes, right? But when we're on a cul-de-sac lot, if you look at these cul-de-sacs that are up here. Look how big these cul-de-sac lots get. And, and if, sorry, it's not a cul-de-sac technically.
You meant these.
The curves, the lots in the curve, look how big those lots end up being. And they, they have to be that big because the house is just, just the way it is.
Let me ask, let me ask, especially with those, I've seen some neighborhoods when they come in here and they do almost, they almost bring it in a little bit.
A cul-de-bobble?
Yeah, a cul-de-bobble. Thank you. That's what I was looking for.
That's a possibility too.
I mean, I think one of the, one of the biggest points is it's, it's going to cost us a big amount of money to go back to the engineering and start redrawing things. If, if the answer is just no, then we're not going to go spend money. If the answer is, okay, you're not saying all of them want a setback to be, but we're, we're maybe okay with, with a third of them having some difference that based upon the struggles. Yeah, we'll take, we're, we're, we're born to that or we're born to some of these things. That gives us direction to be able to go spend money to bring. And if the answer is just wow, no, then that tells us, you know, we're, we're, what we're trying to do is find some give to where we can then now say, okay. It sounds like there's some receptiveness to at least get some of those lots against these topo areas. Yeah, let's see if we can get some 55s in it, as long as we try to still have 60s, spend some money bringing something back to you. That at least you have some ability now to say, I think, you know, I think we'd like to see something like that. Again, if the answer is just no, it's no. We don't want to beat our heads against the wall anymore than you guys do. I think our point in coming back here is saying, we really want to make this a great site on Morovia. We, what was approved is approved before we got involved. Again, that's not anybody's problem. That's ours. We came in, walked around and then we realized the cost is too much. So now we're trying to salvage this project. And a little bit of relief when it was already approved. If there's hopefully some sentiment that you guys are open to some modifications that we're talking about.
And we're going to hopefully provide you that, that straight through road for you. That runs through.
So basically this, this is going to help the whole way.
Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, that's the idea.
What we would like, what we'd like to be able to do is come back to you with a main corridor through, ideally just one entrance on.
But by now what you're showing us right, like, right here, right here, it's just this, this right here?
Right here.
It almost like it's.
Okay, all right.
We just didn't want to keep going with it. We had your input, right?
But I can see the thing, you know, just, just not this. No house will face this road.
Okay, I see what you're saying. So we're also saying that the no house faces, faces the road and, and this is going to go through her, and the other streets are going to. That's what we're looking, that's it.
What, what's your width of the?
55 and 60s.
55 and 60. And I, and I, well, I'm just.
40 and 51.
And, and how deep did you say? So I'm on 56 by 122. So I can go look in my, look at my house, because my house is 40 feet wide. It's the max width for our property. For, for the setbacks and everything. So that kind of gives me an idea of lots.
And that's minimal.
That's much more palatable than, than.
So I guess I live on a, you know, 56 lot.
Yeah.
I mean, I could maybe 55 possibly, but there's other issues still, you know? So that, I mean, that helps my thing.
But we're not getting closer together from the lot standpoint, from the houses perspective, right? We're going to stay at, at that 15 foot in between houses, seven and a half hundred or something.
I'd have, I'd have to see what this, I've got one neighborhood that's got a smaller house, so that's about a larger.
It's 60 to 55, it's still going to be for the most part, two 40 foot wide houses. So there is going to be some, but it's not, they say the house is 35 foot wide and the next one next to it is 40. Yeah. I think the minimum house size is going to be 40, 40 width rather. I think the minimum house size is going to be forty, forty width rather.
Which is what yours is.
I think that's correct, but I don't believe any of the product we showed was less than forty wide.
Well, those would have to be on a sixty. We have some hitters first, fifty five and sixties. Again, our hope is to have some fifty fives, again, to be able to pull them up. But if we do have inter inverse, you know, sixties, you're going to see a little more separation.
Okay, so now. Not quite as opposed to that as it was before tonight. Now, as far as your set, are the setbacks, do you really want to change? From your front to back setback?
Yeah, just the front.
Front, the front yard. Our setbacks because of topography.
Yeah, not and I don't think, I don't think the rear yard we even need it.
It's just in those.
You know what, some people. We spend more of our time on our backyard.
Yes, everybody does.
Everybody does.
But but and and so the reason is, is if you envision a slope, right? And if the slope's coming at the house, we can make that slope less if we move the house forward.
If if the front setback.
So that's the whole, that's the whole reasoning for this is. And it would, you know, if we stayed with with this setup here, and it kind of mirrored as it went, these would definitely need the relief here because this is the big deal.
Yeah, yes, yep.
Here, these would need the relief here because it's going the other way. And so they need to move closer to get away from the blow. So as we go this way, we'll just step them as we go down. And so if this layout compared to the old layout, there's probably not nearly as many front yard setbacks that need to be reduced as there was before.
And I understand.
Running in a different direction.
Right.
They were. This way.
Right.
The road.
This bottom one here, if every single lot here is fifty fifty five.
Well, that was just, we just do it all that.
Yeah.
That way. Don't take it from which ones will be.
If there was, if there was one less lot there, I know it's a numbers game, if there was one less lot there, then those lots could be a little bit larger.
Well, maybe we do sixties more on the perimeter and keep that fifty five.
Or they might work in between fifty seven.
Yeah, and I think, I guess for flexibility, we're looking, it's it's more of hopefully giving you guys a little help where you say, all right, we see what your pain points are, right? And we're not looking to change setbacks where there's not a pain point. It's those areas where where it's in, it's incredibly expensive, which has driven the cost of other development. We're asking for relief in the pain points to help solve the topography issues.
Problem. Personally, I like the eighty one instead of the sixty nine. And I understand it takes a little commercial away. I understand that.
There's still two commercials.
Right, that's right. And we, and there's still going to be commercial on the west, so.
I like the eighty one.
I mean, the same thing with the with the lot width, again, not, we are not here asking to do something frivolous. We're saying, we we need to do this to make it a viable project. We're gonna, we're gonna spend time with our. There's many sixties as a candidate, as I said, if we keep them on the perimeter and keep some fifty five inside and move some of those ones up where there's that.
This is by far more palatable than than this, of course. And and gentrifying, I mean, that I I have a fault with that. As far as, but I I love this school run goes through here.
Yeah.
And I I the eighty one seems to be more, I I mean, I don't want to be taking away from commercial space anyways, but I do like the the design of it a little bit better. Uh, I think it's going to be more conducive to, and you don't have, it doesn't, this here, this, listen, I'm a retired man, I did twenty one years. When I retired ninety five, this is like a bear. Thank you. You knew exactly what I was going to say.
That wasn't our purpose by any means. That way, that was, we had the first.
This has some aesthetic appeal to it, and the eighty one does. And I.
Based upon the last meeting, I wasn't at, but.
Oh, no, he walked away and he felt like he'd been spanked.
It's okay. Again, we've done this long enough, we respect, and we we had a very similar situation in another one of our offices that happens to be in Cincinnati area. And we had this thing afterwards. It was like, there was something where we weren't connecting. And I think the reason we're meeting, then you get everybody brought up and everybody comes in with all their burning flags and yelling and you can't have this kind of take, you know, give and take without this kind of informal. So I think that was our point with Don and and Eddie before is that can you come in and have this talk? And it we think it makes a lot of sense and trying to come in and say, we're trying to make this better. We're not trying to make it.
Well, it it this obviously does make it better. I'm I I'm a lot more receptive to this.
But something that they also consider if you buy
Correct.
Yeah, sure.
Hey, I'm on town council. Lauren is on town council. He's sitting behind you. So whether it gets by that council, that's another thing because I'm just one person.
Well, I look, hopefully, you know, I you know, I thought we know that there's been some change in in the last election.
Yeah.
You know, the the hope is to get some by and from plant commission, plant commission's favorable, and hopefully the council takes that recommendation. Hopefully, again, in benefit of, we're not coming in here frivolous. We all worked through this. It kind of to me shows council, like, we're working hard at this. We're trying to do something.
Right now, I was concerned with lot size and setbacks, so you gentlemen.
Yeah.
I'm less concerned about that now. Compared by also Devon and Kennedy, his friend. The sewer issue, if we can.
Can build a proceed if it's not there.
I understand that.
Because I'm just going to ask you guys, not you guys, but your operator to Stein, Doc, saying you have capacity. He can't do that today.
No, he can't. He can't.
Let me get that.
Okay.
We knew.
There's, we know there's going to be capacity at, there is going to be at some point.
You guys have to have capacity in order to fall inside the state regulations. You're gonna.
It's going to take you months to draw and all that anyway.
Like you said, you know, two, three years.
And Sean, you've gone ahead and talked to him about all this. Okay, okay. Well, you know about the upgrade that we're.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, that would have been great.
But remember, let's let's just say that today we said our original build was approved.
Yeah.
But we ain't going to build it.
Well.
Because ideally they don't let us.
Because we're looking at, what, twenty seven?
Two thousand twenty seven?
Yeah.
For you guys?
Yeah.
Or for us, me?
But for you, I mean, even if even if we approve this thing, like.
Yeah, we wouldn't be. Yeah, the, I mean, if everything went smashingly, because we're already turned up, we could maybe have a toilet flush on twenty six, but more likely twenty seven.
Twenty seven, yeah.
And if you think about it, then models are built, there's a marketing period, there's no real flushing in a model problem. So there's a lot of factors, but we we understand the risk of of this whole process. And then and then Sean sends a letter to I D M saying we don't have passing items. That's where you think going until they give it. And they're going to work with you guys to make sure you get back in the plants. And when we're ready, when they say we're ready to level up again, we're not clearly you know, plant commission can't solve that problem. Town council eventually is going to have to solve that problem.
Utilities may. Especially if you can't let them do their thing.
Yeah.
That we're here early.
Well, they still had to talk about it and.
I I get. In theory, you don't have capacity for them.
But we'd like to, we'd like to start getting some redesigns.
This is that.
A little bit smaller lots here and there, not changing the amount of lots.
This is a step in the right direction. It really is.
Personally, I I like that better. I'm more on board with it than I was last time.
I like, I like this one.
I do have a question. I I've only been doing this one here for, you know, that for the meeting. So you got the boulevard as Phil likes to call it. Like a boulevard, I mean, I mean, we go up over the hill and then.
All West Union.
So we won't.
That's just a.
So we only design one section right now, so that's the full eventually good again.
Okay.
But that's just what we, I just, oh my gosh, just just give you a snippet of where.
Okay, we still got this section, this.
Here's the thing, Kenny, once the stars and that snake in that way, okay? And then we'll set, you know, the annexation starts taking in, we'll start annexing more and more as we go that way. And, you know, the county is going to end up having to go ahead and improve as well too. So we'll, we'll find the 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 resources to go and do it, but it's going to end up having to be improved and it's going to have to be built on individually.
Kenny, we also.
We're looking at in terms of the future. I'm sorry.
No, okay, I apologize. And looking at it as it, what it shows there is basically what's what's a stub into that.
Yeah, it's under that section.
So when the next section gets done, this stuff will continue. And then when we come back, we'll have a full redesign that shows the entire development so you can visualize exactly where that through road is going to go.
That's where that water is now. Because that's that's the reason. So.
Inflating western.
Should.
That was my second.
Whether or not it should or not.
That's another thing.
That connection's not going to be there until twenty nine or thirty.
Right. But if we start approving, say, okay, start.
Twenty nine or thirty. Very relieved.
People are going to start using.
And well, they're not going to be there to the last section, so we're not being.
Twenty nine or thirty, so we're.
And we don't know what this nap center is going to bring. We have seventy seven acres on the
Other side.
East side, like West Union Road, that is part of the town. I am, I mean.
You're required to.
Well, we don't know what's what's going to happen on that property.
Yeah, we're still waiting. Part of this in town.
The east side, I thought the east side of.
Of Union is in.
There's seventy seven acres across the street from Eagle Point Road.
Yeah, right.
That is part of the town.
Yeah, so within their buy, so once they buy that, even if they are developing it, they still should be required to improve road.
That's part of.
As part of, as part of the Morgan County development, they should be.
Yeah, or we're trying to get them to listen to it.
I feel like. I feel like whatever they do on that property, they need to put the road straight through that seventy seven acres instead of having all these S curves.
Agreed.
On West Union.
Yeah, right. There is the improvement that needs to happen, like straighten it out.
Do you think collectively, what we've talked about here is something we, you feel all right about us moving forward with? Uh, again.
I thought you had already come in and told all this.
Yeah, right. All right. No, good. That feels good.
Nobody asked me. But you know, my opinion, my opinion is it's always out the other problems, which is the basic, getting neighborhoods. I mean, that's my opinion.
Well. He's just asking, you know, do we have enough agreement here that he can go back and redesign?
I'm not going to give it my blessing because we don't know in the end, but I will say this together. I can say that for sure.
I understand your concerns, also from what he said, they could be building right now. The only reason they're not, just hold on. The only reason they are not building right now because it is not cost effective for the producer. They could.
We found a builder that was willing to pass another ten thousand dollars. Lot, then we might hold the trigger.
Right, the project has already been approved.
We don't want to.
I don't operate that.
Right, I understand.
They're going to be doing that and maybe I'm scared they're going to do that. No, I don't operate that.
I understand that.
We're going to look at this realistically, and if it's going to cost, if the people in Monrovia development like this, then I'm more than happy to approve it. But everything that I'm hearing is that people don't want more neighborhoods where the warehouse workers will rent.
You don't need saying if a house is going to go ahead and be rented or not.
Issue being.
It's not bad.
Has already been approved.
Right, I understand that, so that. But if they can't build on it, this is.
That's what we're trying to do.
Right.
Well, we're them are blessing or not asking to say, you know what? Back and redesign it. That's what, I mean, we're not saying you can redesign and build, but we just can go back and try again and then bring it back to us. That's just one.
For the sanitary issue, that will have to be resolved before we can build. You cannot, would not be able to to start construction or at least have a house there until a sanitary situation with with its house resolved. That has nothing to do with plant commission, nothing to do with council. If today we started earth moving and things, I'm just going to say you can't connect, you don't have capacity. And until the town of Monrovia fixes that problem, there's not a house getting connected to anything. So from, I I hear what you're saying, and I totally respect that, but you've got protections in there. Until that sanitary, which is in my, that's the biggest issue.
Basically, what I said to you. The other issues.
Yeah, in my, that's what I'm trying to give you confidence. It has to get solved before we can put a house. Yeah. You guys ready to go? Pacer game, second half?
You got someone else?
Well, appreciate your time. I think we'll, we'll, based upon what you all said, we can get to work on doing some of this and hopefully share it back with you when we have something else to talk about, when we got a design to start tweaking with you guys. And again, trying to make make what's already approved better.
Yeah, okay.
All right.
All right.
Thank you all very much for this.
Thank you.
Valuable time.
Thank you, everybody. Appreciate it.
Good luck doing.
Consideration of minutes.
I moved that the minutes be approved as per sentence.
Second.
Get that, Donald?
Who do I have to go to?
Town council report. Anybody want to elaborate on that?
Uh, the only thing in there is that everybody showed up and everybody voted. No, uh, it's a, it's there for emotional purposes, so I'm not going to comment on it.
Well, planning and building report. We have, uh, we have two permits to Ladonna Edwards, one at one fifty five West Main and one at forty five Water Street. We have a concrete slab permit for two oh five West Main Street and.
Where is that? Two oh five.
That's where the old bank used to be. He's putting a concrete slab on the back of his property.
Oh, okay. All right.
Oh.
All right, Balkanburg is building another home at thirty sixty four West Glacier.
Is that your name?
And D R Horton, D R Horton has four permits in Homestead.
How many houses, just out of curiosity, just on this toilet?
Last section's low.
Hundred fifty.
Because isn't that what Mr. and our sources do there?
Yeah, we're just going to keep off the mercy for flushing the toilet.
You know, honestly, I don't know what to think about the sewer plants. See, Oregon paid this town to expand that sewer plant to accommodate Homestead, and it wasn't nine hundred, it was thirteen hundred.
Yeah, that's what the original design was.
I don't know.
I don't know what that was like.
Something's wrong with the sewer system.
When I moved, they told me nine ninety.
Somehow getting in there that it's not supposed to be in there.
Yeah, and Sean's already gone ahead and fixed, I guess, one of those already. So and that was what was causing the.
Multiple homes in Homestead probably have three or four families living in there.
Yeah, they're probably busting the toilet twenty seven, twenty four seven.
Hey, I'm old. I pee a lot. I'm sorry.
And and Kenny drinks. Brew beer, so he.
Drink a lot of coffee.
And a lot of coffee, well, me too. Man, I'm a coffee bean. Okay. Old business. Oh, I'm sorry.
All right. Old business, I don't think you would have a thing to talk about a low business, but new business, the George of the Nazarene. Want to change the. Right.
Yeah, with the little tree that's being sold.
The, the, everyone should have this.
Yeah.
All right, they're, they're wanting to move the the sign that's up by the building.
Turn all the port of the sign.
Out to where the, uh, the the sign used to be in the grass.
Yeah.
But they have to stay back twenty five feet out of the right of way. But they have to stay back twenty-five feet out of the right of way. So that sign will have to go back at the back. This, this driveway entrance is twenty-five feet.
Right, it has to be at the end of.
It has to be somewhere at the end of that, in that grass.
So they're gonna have to make some more grassy, grassy for the sign or something. Yeah, Eddie can show you where that's gonna go.
Here's the picture of the sign, the one from this sign, right here.
Close see where this sign is.
All right, well, it's twenty-five feet back.
Okay.
Outside of the right of way, so, and they had a cross, this cross used to be on the front of the building.
Yep, yeah, I remember, you can see that.
All right, and they're wanting to move it to the side of the building, this side here.
Okay, is it, is it? Well, it's gonna have.
Put that sign across the front of the building.
Oh, okay. And then they're just moving across. Are any of these signs lighted?
Uh, all of them are.
With existing power and lights that are there.
Right.
Going to there.
I mean, they're, they're all gonna be lit.
Okay, so now, are lit all my wrong, my timers, are we gonna, are we gonna run into an issue with the same thing we did with the dental office?
Is. Oh, yeah, oh, yeah.
Is the brightness of their lighting gonna interfere with anybody else?
Right, well, for me, I don't think so. I don't think that the light coming out the front of that building is gonna, it won't, won't go across the street and get anyone. And on the side of the building, it will face the parsonage.
Well, the parsonage is being sold, isn't it? The parsonage is being sold. He said something about somebody was gonna be moving in there.
A young couple said.
And, and, and the, uh, this sign, that, that, that sign already exists.
Yep.
It's gonna be out there, it's gonna be twenty-five feet from the edge of the road. So.
As long as that does.
I mean.
This thing is gonna be one hundred square feet?
I've tried to compare this thing to the U D O, and I think it's compliant with the U D O. I just wanted to bring it to everyone here and get your thoughts on the whole approval permit.
As long as this sign, once it's moved out, does not hinder your sight lines.
Traffic.
Across on traffic, on thirty-nine.
I would be in favor of it, yeah. I'm sure somebody will complain that that light's going in the window though. You know.
Well, the only light that, that, that really will be shedding will be the light on that cross, and I, I don't know.
Face towards the liquor store.
That, that.
Usually, usually the cross, they.
Sorry.
They use something like fluorescent light, a hind.
Yeah, behind.
It's lit from, it's lit from the back.
From the back across shiny cat at the home, at the church, and then you'll get reflected.
Right, it's not really gonna be light shining out, you know?
And it's gonna be, or not, it's gonna be L E D, it won't be anybody who puts in.
The people's liquor store will be.
Well, and.
They have fluorescent too.
It's too bright.
Yeah, I know, I get it, I work, I use one.
You know, I.
Are we voting on this thing?
Well, before I approve this permit for them, I wanted to bring it before you all.
I'm with my, as far as the sign is concerned, that one, if it doesn't obstruct traffic, I'm fine with it. It seems like it is in dimensions with.
And they, they can talk about. What did it, a self, a self install?
So he's just gonna install.
Guys, some kind of a sign by law would be there.
As long as he's got experience and he doesn't save.
You know.
I, I don't have an issue with it.
And there's no problems gonna be, I mean, I used to go to Nasserine Church, they don't answer drinks, so there's no big problem over there.
Somebody's changing lighting around an electrical on a building, if they're not, if they don't know what they're doing, that's, that, to me, is a potential for.
Right.
And, but that's not our concern, that's the concern of church.
Right, right.
If they wanna hire somebody that's a jack of all trades to do it.
Right, well, there's already power out to this ugly sign that sits in that grass, so there's power.
I don't think that that sign is that ugly, that's okay to me.
This sign?
Oh, no, no, I meant this one here, I thought this.
No, that sign looks fine. That sign there, I'll be glad to resolve that.
It's gonna be on the north side where the driveway goes in.
Want to say, the portable one?
Aren't there two entrances all the way? Yeah, two entrances.
Well, I thought you, I thought this was the one.
He said it's just the portable one, the movable one, so he said they were gonna put it right there.
The sign will be in.
The one that's on the wheel or whatever it is.
All right, so everyone's okay with it?
Are they gonna paint their building?
Yeah, I think they vote.
I don't have an issue with it, I don't either.
I'm fine with it.
I'm good.
Cause there's nobody to interfere with.
There's nobody, what?
Nobody close enough where the, the lights are gonna bother them.
Yeah, I don't, that, the, the cross sign may alienate the one lady.
Well.
Will that be pointed at her back?
Yeah, you watch, you won't be able to see, because you'll be seeing the cross every day. So it was that or the ice cream shop, one or the other was gonna get her.
We are online.
So. Huh? Oh, okay, well, I would like to move that we adjourn.
Oh, I got one thing I gotta bring up.
Oh, man.
It's worth it to listen to, I don't agree with the tackle truck, I'm sorry, but that is not a business on the corner there. Why do we not have some kind of a vendor's license if you're gonna sell.
I think it looks like, I think it looks like trash too, but Tammy loves it, so I'm not arguing.
That's not, I mean, honestly, is that, is that code, I mean, is that?
No, honestly, if you redo this ordinance, you're supposed to have, that, that is considered a peddler.
Yes.
All right, and they should have a license, but for some reason.
The town of Monrovia could benefit if they don't have a license. They should pay for that, if they, I don't agree with them being there, because anybody could pull up a truck.
They're being there either, because anybody that lives in nine or forty-two could put a, put a food truck right out in front of their house.
I mean, yeah, it wouldn't even approve Dollar General, and then we've got Taco Bell and the little.
You mean Family Dollar.
Family Dollar.
Right.
I'll finish Taco Bell.
I'm sorry, but I think it's trash.
And who's your line of sight when you're pulling up there from the south?
It's in a bad place too, but Tammy likes it, she doesn't.
Well, and it's my understanding, Mary Ann said that she tried to talk to the town council about it, and.
Tammy's not gonna vote.
And they were both part of it.
Yeah.
They were.
Okay, so now, who has authority to make a decision that it needs to be, they need to move?
Well, it's a town.
That should find the idea. But you know who has that? Uh, who's all the information, the works, is it you? I pointed it, and she has it, she has it in place, and this is all Tammy's.
We had some complaints today about that, from the guy with the yellow house. Well, we're talking about the Taco Bro.
Oh, you got another complaint? The only question.
We even complained about the noise from the generator, and I went and called Nancy about that today. It's only in the next couple of days that E E S is supposed to come out, power.
Yeah, Lauren just said.
Nancy has to come out with that property.
I think she does.
Yes, she does.
She brought us to the Scott.
I like Nancy, but Nancy is the one that's going to do this, the town should be going after her. If that's her property, Nancy is the one that should, is allowing that taco truck to sit, uh, sit there permanently. I mean, I like Nancy, she does a lot for the town, but she shouldn't be allowing, especially right at the corner in the intersection, like you said.
And we almost hit a Ken when I was crossing the street.
That's, that works.
If I was still present, the darn thing would not be sitting there, so.
And, and here's the point too, is that piece of property is not paying taxes for a business.
Exactly.
Paying for a vacant piece of property is that.
And there's a plant standing up there now.
Well, yeah, I know, but that is Nancy's property there, right? That pays.
Nancy, no, Nancy owns that corner block, she just recently bought it, she just recently bought it.
Oh, she did buy it recently?
Well, I thought, I thought the Pierce's owned it, that's.
Scott Pierce owned it.
Yeah, I thought he did.
Scott Pierce and somebody else.
It's an LLC, but when I pulled it up, it was Scott and that plumber.
Plumber?
Okay, so, P E R, I might be saying that.
Now, along the same lines as the taco truck, the gal who's doing the flowers, and she said she's gonna be doing produce and something else. Does something like that, because it's not a permanent structure, or does it need, is something like that, should that be permitted, permitted for?
Well.
Is that, is it, because it is technically a business.
And see, I think we don't have any.
But does it come up, but does it come up, can Nancy say?
According to this paper right here, that's a landlord too, and she should have a license to be selling.
And we're supposed to be doing this, but it'll get anywhere.
They should actually make up some money for the town if they're gonna be there anyway.
Okay, so what if Nancy comes up and says, well, it's mine, it's on her property? I'm, I'm just asking.
But parcels, then, yeah, it is, but she's gonna be paying taxes on a business then, as opposed to.
Well, she's gonna be paying on her business, if she just comes up and says an extension, if she says it's an extension of my business, what? I mean, I'm just asking the question, I don't.
Are we wearing goggles?
I think she would have to combine, I'm not an attorney, but I think she would have to combine those laws to make that part her business, right?
You guys can bring this up at the town council meeting, I think it'd be a good idea if it was.
I mean, is that where it should be?
Yeah, it should be, because it's not getting enforced, and any kind of attempted discussion on this is not allowed.
Yeah, it, I mean, I, you can't give it to somebody and let them put a taco truck, and somebody come to a barbecue truck and you tell them no.
Exactly.
And you should have a whole lot of trucks.
I, I know Henderson's is doing something, what, every.
Yes, they're gonna.
But that's, but that's just a Monday, and that.
Friday night, he has filled out the paperwork that's required, is that correct?
Yes.
He has filled out the paperwork, he has not been charged, all right, and, and so, I mean. For me, we're the planning commission, all right? That's all town council business.
It is.
Been told that by the, the lady that runs the town council now. So, I'm making recommendations.
Isn't it us that would recommend a fee for doing?
Yeah, but she's not gonna lie.
There's a fee, there's a fee, it's all in here.
The fee they have to pay to do that?
No, it's a license, no.
Cause the town council.
The town council has decided somehow that they don't need to be charged.
I'm not in favor of that, no, I think it should be charged, this is my pick.
Well, and you can't show meritism for one.
No, and, and we can't have stuff written in here.
And not get.
That are not gonna enforce.
Right, twice you might as well turn it on.
No.
Okay, with that.
The town council meeting and take it up.
With that, I move that we get charged.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
See you next month.